Okay, welcome to the September meeting of the Board of Education for the Lake Mills Area School District. The mission statement of the school district is to prepare for all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. I would ask for verification of the meeting notice.
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills Post Office and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
Okay, thank you. The next is the approval of the agenda. I would ask for a motion to that effect and prior to that if there's anything on the consent agenda that the board would like to consider separately, this would be a time to identify that.
I'll move the board approved the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'd like to now call the meeting to order. I would ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
And if we could have a roll call of attendance, please.
Brianna Beslick, here. Dawn Delaney, here. Ken Imers.
Here.
Amy Litcher. Robert Tempirio.
Here.
So, we do have a quorum. We can conduct business. And before we get started with the respective reports, it is certainly our intent to continue to hold in-person meetings and we hope that we can do them without any disruptions. And if a person is making a disruption, they'll be requested to stop. And if they continue, they'll be requested the second time. And if they still continue, I will ask one of the officers to escort them from the room. So, the next item then is the board reports. Dr. Delaney.
Yes, the board received two thank you notes this month. One from Liz Body, High School LMSE Director, who had 30 years of service with the district prior to her retirement, and Mr. Jerry Schultz, District Bus Driver, with 18 years of service with the district before he retired.
Okay, thank you. We have some administrative reports this evening. Ms. Brown, Director of Special Education.
Hello, good evening. Every year, I need to give a report on the previous year's seclusion and restraint numbers. So those are uploaded for you. This year, we had two incidents of seclusion and 10 incidences of restraints. I do want to point out that when we do anything like this, it is always as a last resort and only if the student is in danger of hurting themselves or others. Some of those numbers are a little bit higher than what I would like to see, particularly at the middle school. All of the numbers that you see at the middle school level were from students who were placed at an offsite school district. So, just wanted to give you that information. Also, all of our special education staff, paraprofessionals, are trained in nonviolent crisis intervention and we have three on-staff trainers. So, that's an increase from previous years. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Siegflug, Elementary School Principal.
Good evening. So, it's been, you know, it's been eight days. We have a great positive energy within the building. Students are having fun. They're reading, they're doing art projects, and they're going to music, and it's been a really great start. Our new staff have acclimated very quickly and are up to date on all of the training and implementing our curriculum. So our units of study and reading and writing, as well as our math curriculum, and they're doing a phenomenal job. It has also been really awesome to see our early childhood programs start and take off. We have Mrs. McCann, who's doing a great job getting in our youngest learners and working with them to get them on the best path. I want to express my gratitude for that extra kindergarten and second grade teacher. We continue to welcome new families and new students who tend to have either a kindergartner and/or a second grader. And so that's been very helpful. Our kindergarten numbers, for the most part, are over 20 again, and that's with the six sections. So, I just wanted to share, I wanted to thank you guys for that. It has been very beneficial to us. And we are starting our assessment windows, which will allow us to get some more information on kids and where they are so that we can begin leveraging our services to the best that we can to meet all of their needs. Is there any questions? Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bauer, Middle School Principal.
Good evening. It's been really great to have all the middle schoolers back in the building. Our staff has been working hard over the summer and into the start of the school year on two of our building goals. One is to work on an increase in literacy at the middle school level through informational texts. So, we've had a professional development on that topic and our teachers will be developing their student learning objectives and their professional practice goals based on our literacy goal. We have also been working hard on our second goal, which is our social-emotional learning goal, our SEL goal. So, we are continuing with the Playworks program. This year, we are focusing on staff engagement with students in play. So staff are learning how to engage fully with students in SEL work while they play. We are also, our SEL committee has developed bi-weekly lessons, which we're teaching during core community. This month, we're focusing on the ever-important middle school organization and how to check your grades. So, there's been some adjustment. You know, having all, we were probably maybe 250 middle schoolers and we're back up to 430. So, it's a big adjustment for the students and staff to have everyone back, but I think the energy is just wonderful and I think we're all grateful for this opportunity. Any questions for me?
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Vogel, High School Principal.
It's good to have the kids back in the building. Our operations are kind of almost as normal as possible. I'd have to say the start of the school year has been going great. We had all of our class meetings in the first several days of school. Getting in those class meetings, we've kind of set the tone to the classes as far as rules, procedures, norms of behavior, guidance reminders and safety reminders, and then overall how the building operates. So I think those went really well. Staff started out strong with the PD work on the literacy in the content area before school started and right away with I believe rigorous instruction on the second day of school over the last week. So, the new people have assimilated really well as well. Our athletics and co-curriculars are off and running. Look for Mr. Constine's reminders on athletic schedules, athletic updates, and student of excellence on a weekly basis. Musical auditions already happened as well. Our service clubs, as far as NHS interact, and student council are underway. The Mill, our school store, is up and running as well. And our first-class meetings and homecoming take place tomorrow morning. So, we're in full swing. Questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Ms. Thompson, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Tonight, I wanted to give you an update on our strategic planning and how it is coming alive within the school district. So I'll be giving this update a couple of times throughout the school year. So this is our strategic plan, the, as you've seen before, our mission and vision and the four pillars. The pillar that I wanted to focus on today was the pillar on fostering student engagement and learning. The two pieces of this is to make sure that we have ongoing professional development for our staff in order to increase student engagement, relationships, and achievement, and then also to develop a systematic structure to address opportunity gaps and to provide inclusivity and equity for our students. So, from that work in the spring, we brought everything back to administrative retreat this summer and looked specifically at this pillar to think about how can we, what can we do within the schools to be able to promote these two things? And we developed a theory of action. And within the theory of action, I'm actually going to use. I don't think I can zip in as closely as I want to with the. So the one theory is if we have engagement in ongoing professional development in English Language Arts, so literacy in the content areas, and social-emotional learning, then we'll be able to enhance student engagement, relationships, and achievement. So that's the one theory that we're basing our goals on this year. The second theory of action is to develop that, the team structures, how are we within the buildings and across the district utilizing team time together to be able to think about students and what they need, the needs that they have for their success in school? So from there, we developed a 100-day plan. So within that plan, we have the area, the action steps. We're looking at literacy in the content area. So in August, Catherine McKnight came to work with our sixth through 12th grade teachers to think about reading comprehension strategies and vocabulary strategies that they can use within their classrooms. So each 100 days, we'll be pinpointing the different action items, and when they are green, that means we've accomplished those tasks. And then we'll develop another action plan once this one is complete. So from this theory of action that we put together as an administrative team, we then brought it back to the building levels. So we brought together leadership teams from each of the buildings, the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. At the elementary school, we looked at district-wide data, so similar data to what we used in strategic planning, but then also looking at specific data at the elementary school. They had decided as a leadership team to focus on math as one of their instructional areas, to make sure that we have hands-on learning happening in our classrooms and that students are using mathematical discourse, which means talking about math and being able to express their thinking in math. And then the other goal that the elementary came up with was around social-emotional learning. And they are going to use their teamwork time. So every day, they get to play at the end of the day, and that's where they're going to have the explicit instruction for social-emotional learning. In the middle school, as you heard Ms. Bowers talk about, they also have two goals. The first goal is about literacy in the content area, so making sure that all of our teachers are teaching literacy, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. So those are the core areas of instruction that we're looking at for reading comprehension and vocabulary. In middle school, the technical vocabulary really increases across the content area. So we want to make sure that our teachers have the tools that they need to be able to break down those strategies for our middle school students across all content areas. And as Ms. Bauer mentioned, the social-emotional learning is the other goal that the middle school is looking at. And then finally, the high school, again, that goal of literacy in the content area. So hopefully, you're hearing this theme, that as a district, we're really trying to row together and have common language and expectations across the buildings and for students and staff. And then social-emotional learning is their second goal. And for the high school, they are looking at their advisory periods to be able to put in place that social-emotional learning. And it's different for every grade level, but really looking at how do we help our kids to be prepared for the future, for college and career readiness, and what skills do they need, from coping with mental health challenges that might come up for any one of them, how do you deal with stress? But then also, how do you apply for college? How do you fill out your college applications? How can you look for careers that best suit your needs? So those are our goals that we're going to be working on all year long, but we're taking it kind of bit by bit, you know, one bite of the elephant at a time. So the next steps are tri-annual data team meetings. So this month, and going into October, I'll be meeting with each building to go over their data. At the high school, that'll look like, looking at our historical data and WISE data. At middle school and elementary, we'll look at that real-time data of iReady, the assessments that our students are embarking on this week. We have department meetings focused on disciplinary literacy. So we had that kickoff in August with Katie McKnight coming to work with our teachers. But if we don't do anything with that information, just like if you're training for a marathon, you need somebody to kind of remind you of all the great things that we're doing. So the department meetings will be that, to be able to think about the reading comprehension and vocabulary strategies that our teachers are using with their students in the classroom. And then as an administrative team, we are going to be developing a 200-day plan. So what are we going to do after the first 100 days to keep this work alive and going? We have science, social studies, social-emotional learning, and math, all kind of in the background and the back burner, not the back burner, but just on the side of all of this forefront work. Science and social studies, we're looking at inquiry-based teaching, making sure that kids are coming up with essential questions. In the area of science, thinking about phenomenons so that their learning is engaging and has purpose. And I've already talked about the social-emotional learning. And then math, we have a 4K through 12th grade focus on professional development this year with Steven Miallovich coming from CISA II. So that work is also ongoing for all of our teachers across the district. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Naylor, Director of Business Services.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to start out with just giving you a little update on our DPI reporting. So the annual report, the big report of the year, has been submitted and actually just signed tonight by Dawn, thank you. Our special ed report has been submitted. And then next coming up is our student school level report, which is a transparency financial report that just basically gives the expenditures per student, per grade level. So that's coming up and will be submitted this week. And then another big one is our third Friday enrollment report that is coming up. So the date for that is the 17th, which is this Friday, and then that's due October 1st. And so we are kind of, we are predicting, we predicted a flat enrollment. We've seen an increase every year since 20, I think 11, 12, we've seen increases. This is the first year we may see a decrease, very slight decrease, five to 10 students. But that's, those are very preliminary numbers. So across the board, there could be, I hope not in my first year that there's a decrease, but it could happen. So I just kind of wanted to report that. And then a summer school update for our FTE is we're at 70. So that's what we had predicted, and it looks preliminary when I take one quick look over that report yet to do some calculations, but was looking at it, it'll be at 70 FTE. And that's paraded at 40% as it pertains to the revenue limit. In regards to food service, we are continuing this year with a seamless summer option. So I've reported that earlier, but our contract has been officially approved, so that is providing the breakfast and lunch at no cost to our students and families. So we're excited about that. It does not include all the cart items. So some families are questioning why they have money in their accounts, but at the middle school and the high school level, they still can make some purchases. So, I'd like to report on transportation. So our district is like many districts across the state right now, and we are short on bus drivers. And you probably know that, but I kind of want to put it out there as one additional plea that we're looking for drivers. We could hire two drivers. So we're, you know, this shortage leaves us in a tight spot when we have people who are trying, our current drivers who try to take vacation or have a sick time, as well as transporting some of our athletic events. We have some coaches that are signing up hopefully to get their CDL because that is one thing that is needed to drive a bus. And we are paying for anybody who is willing to do that. We're paying for their license and all the training for it. Quick update, really no major updates on the budget since the last update. So, early estimates of that equalized property aid is 10% increase in the property values. So once we get those final counts, as well as pupil counts, the private school voucher programs, all those numbers coming in, tying together, I'll be able to finalize the budget and be able to report those accurate, solid numbers. And then we will be able to set the levy at the October 25th board meeting. Any questions for me?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Olson, District Administrator.
All right, I'm going to start out by having Ben Dayton provide a report on the Recreation Department. Usually, he types one up and I kind of regurgitate the information, but his Rec Department's really been doing some wonderful things, and I thought it would be nice to hear from Ben directly.
All right, thank you. This is like one of the few times that I get to talk to you, so I want to kind of use a lot of your time, but not too long. So, first of all, thank you again for your support and everything that we do here at the Rec Department. So this is kind of a snapshot of what we have done in the 2020-21 school year. First off, just kind of going over a few things about our department. Right now, we've got three full-time recreation professionals, two year-round part-time staff. One would be our childcare coordinator. Last year, we started off with one. We kind of went a long period of time without that person, and then we ended up just hiring somebody new for this school year. So really happy to have that person in. And then our other would be a part-time senior center coordinator, which is Carol Burrows, who has been really integral with the senior center. Beyond that, we do provide a lot of jobs for high school students, for adults who are looking for additional hours, and then things of that nature. So we usually have about 55 part-time people throughout the year, including our childcare program. That is a big one. As a department, we've got about 35 years of experience under our belt. We're really integrated within our state association, as well as our national association. So these are kind of a snapshot of what our department looks like. So we break things down into brochure cycles. So I kind of wanted to lay this out in what would be each brochure cycle. So starting off with our fall brochure, we usually run September through December. Our youth athletics, we kind of had a dip, obviously, with everything that was going on, but overall, we had about 167 participants. And then also, I wanted to highlight how many volunteers we've had. Adult athletics have been kind of shaky throughout the last year, but we continue to move forward with that. And then last but not least, our senior center, we did take a break, but slowly but surely we started adding on for obvious reasons. One other thing I want to point out is the hours of care that we provide. During the school year, our hours are a bit smaller because it really is just before school and then after school. And because of that, we still calculate or get a lot of hours of care that is needed, but this is a pretty wide range of months, but that number is kind of important. You'll see why in, once we get to our summer. As we jump into our winter-spring cycle, we did pick up a lot more programs and our participation went up quite a bit. We really started to see things bounce back up as far as what we could do for our students in providing opportunities. As you can see, we had about 781 participation units, I guess, and then 104 volunteers in those programs. Adult volleyball and adult basketball were able to get back onto the court. And then we also had our pickleball open gyms pick up a little bit at the end of spring. Also with our senior center, we were looking to do something with the people that we had and the interests that they had. And one thing was a fundraiser. So last spring, we ran a garage sale fundraiser, and it actually produced quite a bit for, quite a bit of money for our senior center. So we were pretty excited for that, and that might turn into an annual thing, so. Moving on, we did have, our enrichment area kind of took a little bit of a hit, but we started to really ramp things up again. One program that we brought back, which is one of my favorite ones, is the Flashlight Egg Hunt. We maxed that program out, and that one's always a blast to have. As you can see here, our enrolled folks for our childcare program went up again. You would see that as the year was going on. We kept on increasing people who were coming back to school, and then also our hours went up as well. Looking at summer, again, we saw an increase in programs, and this kind of takes us to where we're at right now. If you see there at the bottom, our fall soccer, this is, these are our current numbers for right here, right now. We are seeing quite a bit of people who are interested and we're outside, we're still doing a lot of things for those kids, and so there's a lot of interest ramping up again. Our adult athletics, these numbers are not quite in our heyday, I guess. We're seeing about half the number of men's teams that have played for us, and then a little bit of a drop for our women's sixes volleyball. At the senior center, we opened back up in June to our full-time hours, which was great. We got to see a lot of faces come back, a lot of people who had interest in cards, Domino's, and then puzzles, that's a popular thing. But beyond that, too, our outdoor activities like kayaking, we had a really solid group of kayakers who came out every Friday to explore the lake. So that was exciting and encouraging to see. Some of our other outdoor activities, like biking, that one didn't quite happen, but doesn't mean we don't try again and see what we can do and find those interests for our senior population. Beyond that, we were seeing about 60 visitors throughout the week on average. Some programs drawn higher groups, like bingo, that's a lot more people that we get. Some of our exercise programs, we see a lot of people. But then our smaller programs like Domino's and Uker, those are a little bit smaller. Over the summer, we sell discounted tickets to primarily Wisconsin Dells attractions. Those, we saw about 112 tickets sold this year. That is definitely up from last year because it didn't run period last year, but prior to that, it's pretty on par, so we were happy with that. So, I should take a step back. Our childcare program kind of changes names throughout the year. It's BASP during the school year, before and after-school program. And then during the summer, we call it the Summer Playground Program. So after we got through to the new year, which is where we're, or sorry, we got into the summer, we did see our enrollment ramp up quite a bit again. And that number for the, as few months as we have here, we're pretty on par with the other months of the year, which are a lot more months. So that's kind of the thing. We provide care for students before and after summer school, and then we also provide care during the days that there is no summer school. So we open up at 6:00 AM, and then we shut down at 5:30. So just to give you a sense of that. Here are a list of the programs that unfortunately were canceled during the year. Some of them were staffing things, others were just, there were too many uncertainties, but we're looking to kind of slowly get things back and up and running again. And then just to kind of give you an update on the future of what we're trying to do. Last spring, we had two goal-setting meetings as a department. Some of the things that we wanted to cover were, as you see here, the four goals. Improve communication. So we really wanted to get back to what we want to do with not just verbal communication or email, but what are we putting on our website, our social media, using Peachjar. One of the things that we want to do is have bilingual as best as we can and have like a Spanish section to our flyers that are sent out in Peachjar. And then also, get back to providing a brochure for each of these sessions because we kind of took a break from that with everything that was happening. Next would be filling those staffing vacancies. We were running pretty tight on our before and after-school program last year. During our summer, we got a bit of a break. We were able to have more college students and pairs come and work for us during the summer. So that really helped us out in those months. And then now, currently for our program, we are, we have a good staff group. But that's something that I really want to work on, is making sure that we're filling those vacancies. In addition, education. So staff trainings, educational opportunities for our staff. Our state and national organizations are starting up conferences again. They've really created a robust system for making, I guess, webinar content or Zoom educational opportunities for us to get our CEUs through those two organizations. And then also, just see what we can do for training for our other staff. What is the name of that? Playworks, sorry, Playworks. So our before and after-school. So our before-and-after-school coordinator actually attended the Playworks training, too. So we're trying to get some of that going as well. And then, being a rec department, we like to get creative. And so our goal is to create three new programs this year in some area or another. So. Last but not least, I want to just publicly, I guess, say thank you to Jane Riedel and Brooke Fund, who are a part of my team. They are fantastic. We had a heck of a ride last year, but they were troopers and stuck through it. I want to thank the rest of our staff for everything that they've done. Our program volunteers. We could not do a lot of things that we do without parent volunteers, community member volunteers. So I would definitely want to thank them. Our sponsors, we did take a break just again with everything, but we're going to get back into it with providing sponsorship opportunities to the local businesses and communities. And then obviously, I want to thank the school staff and administration. And somewhere or another, we're kind of working with each other indirectly, directly at times. So we really appreciate the connection that they have with us. The high school coaches and players. Last Saturday, we had a home football game, and we had a great group of high school kids announcing, and it was very entertaining. So things like that, we really appreciate and need and want from these high school teams and players. This is a different one. So we're currently getting accredited through Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers. And so we've got a solid group of volunteers who are really passionate about doing the things that we need to do to elevate our senior centers. So I just wanted to highlight them and the hard work that they're doing. Last but not least, the community. So we live in a great community. We have a great group of people here. So I just really appreciate the Lake Mills community. So any questions?
Ben, did you mention your change in offices?
Oh, no, I did not. So we did move offices. We are now down, which is, I believe, called the Leader Building. It's right next to it, the old post office, I believe. And so we just moved in at the beginning of the month. 322B North Main Street is our address. We're settling in. We've got some decorating to do, but we're getting there. So don't come quite yet, but once I get it a little more put together, stop on down and we'll try to do something, some sort of open house.
Well, Mr. Riedel, thank you very much for your department's enthusiasm. You bring recreational and enrichment opportunities to the entire community, and it's deeply appreciated. So thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, so I will continue. I've got a little bit of the pandemic plan, which we renamed to the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. And a little bit of that's going to be rolled in with the SRR2 and SRR3 discussion tonight. So last year, we did have the LCAT pandemic plan, and it was very specific as far as what our order of operations were going to be throughout the pandemic. And we really needed that because we were really dealing with a lot of quarantines at that time. And the quarantine information changed, I think, like, you know, two or three different times. And then especially once the vaccines came out, that changed the quarantine timelines as well. So as we proceeded this year, I know a lot of people were asking, can we see the specifics again in writing? And so then bringing you that plan tonight. So instead of just calling it the pandemic plan, we renamed it to the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and so on and so forth, just because as we move into the SRR3 funding, which is not out and not available yet, we're starting to get some information from the federal government and from DPI as far as what the requirements will be to receive the SRR3. So SRR3 is quite different than SRR1 and SRR2. So there's a little more strings attached and a little bit more work that's required. So basically, I am getting a jump on what is going to be required for SRR3. And since I was presenting our operational plan through the pandemic tonight, I renamed it in accordance to what will be eventually required for SRR3. So the SRR3 monies, in order to receive that as a district, one of the requirements where you had to have at least 50% of your time in in-person instruction, which we did in the district. There were several districts across the state that did not have the required number of in-person instruction hours, so they don't even qualify for SRR3. Along with that, DPI is currently developing rubrics for what will be required in this Safe Return to In-Person Instruction Plan. Much of what they have communicated to us so far is basically, what is your mitigation plan? How are you going to keep kids safe when they come back to school? Which, we said, we're already in school, but that's a lot of times how things work at the state level, is, you know, things are submitted after the fact. And then the other two requirements, which aren't currently in this plan, but I will bring you back for revisions to that because we have not received information, is our academic support plan to support students across the district. We're working on that with the strategic plan, but I'm not quite sure what the federal government is looking for as far as if they're looking for any type of virtual support, if it's, or what kind of academic supports they need. The other part of that plan is the social-emotional plan for how we're supporting students. Melissa and Amanda are already working on that plan, but once again, we haven't seen the rubric yet for what will be required to submit in that plan. So once we get more information, expect to see this plan brought back to you with those other two phases. And if there's anything else that would have been missing in the mitigation plan that's required that I don't currently have in there. But I thought, instead of having a pandemic plan out there for the public and then submitting the Safe Return to Instruction Plan, and just going to rename it once, and then everybody will see what that plan looks like as we upload that to DPI. So once again, what I really did was took last year's pandemic plan and just modified it for this year. Probably the biggest revision in this plan is, number one, the quarantining. So right now, we are not quarantining students that were close contacts like we did last year. If you remember, we started out in some different phases. We were quarantining close contacts. We went to quarantining whole cohorts at the middle school and the elementary. And then, once the vaccines came out, then that changed the status for some of our high schoolers and our teachers that didn't have to quarantine when they were a close contact. This year, we're just notifying parents if their child may have been exposed. The other thing that you'll see in this plan is Department of Health Services at the state level also modified their definition of a close contact. And so if schools were utilizing masks, that meant that students that were less than three feet in proximity to another student would be a close contact. So anything from three feet on up was not deemed a close contact. So I really just clipped that chart from the DHS plan because I thought it did a nice job of showing that difference. Now, if we do away with masks, that will once again change the definition of the close contact because without masking, they go back to the six-foot distance. There's a couple of other minor changes in there, just operational things. For example, food service used all individually wrapped silverware. This year, we are going back to, at the elementary, using real silverware. All the food was prepackaged last year. This year, we're back in the cafeterias, and food service looks about as normal as can be. It's been actually great seeing the school lunches return to what they should look like instead of all the prepackaged items that they had last year. Other than that, so we really have just kind of taken out things that no longer apply. Otherwise, the plan looks very similar to what it did last year. I guess the other big thing we eliminated is that if a parent needs to notify us that their child tested positive or they tested positive, we're just having them call the attendance line. Last year, we were using the COVID hotline. And that's because we were quarantining at the same time. So last year, Tony received a lot of those calls at night on the weekends. Megan and myself and the principals and Tony were very busy on those outside hours, trying to make sure that kids stayed out of school so that we didn't have more positive cases. Last year with the masking, we didn't see the transmission among the quarantines, which is why we are operating the way we are this year so far. So once that's approved tonight, then we will send that out to parents and put that up on the website.
Dr. Olson, if I understand correctly, this plan incorporates the mitigation plan that we currently had approved.
Correct. Yeah, it's almost the same thing.
And expands on it to provide the additional detail that was similar to what we had last year.
Correct.
Correct.
And I did run that past the Jefferson County Health Department as well, who suggested a few revisions, not many, but incorporated those as well.
And that's all reflected in the draft that you've provided us?
Correct. Yep. All right. As far as, then I'm going to go on to just a little bit more information about the SRR3 monies. So just a couple of quick things. I'm going to kind of flip back and forth between SRR2 and SRR3. So actually, I'll start with the SRR2 monies. So once again, we were allocated the first portion of SRR2, which was the $300,000 amount. That was an allocation that was made statewide, prorated on some various factors. So we have that amount that we currently are able to use. As a reminder, as joint finance was debating the state budget and with the SRR2 monies, what they decided to do was say that to get the second portion of your SRR2 monies, once again, it was going to be based on the number of in-person hours that we had for the last school year. So Roseanne Punzel did, you know, between probably 60 hours of work to be able to figure that calculation and send that into DPI. Several of the surrounding districts, to Roseanne's credit, called and asked for help from our district in that allocation. There were several districts across the state that chose not to do the work because they either didn't have the personnel or they didn't record the instructional minutes upfront, which if you didn't record that in Skyward from the first day of school, there was almost no way you could go back because it was student by student, hour by hour. Luckily, I don't know if people realize this, Roseanne Punzel is basically like the Skyward guru in the state. We're very fortunate to have her on staff, and she had the foresight at the beginning of last year to set up our attendance system to be able to record that. And so even though it was still a lot of work for her to send in those minutes, she was able to be able to do that. So we have not heard from the state yet what our allocation will be for the second half of that SRR2 monies because it is really dependent on the pot of money and the number of hours districts put in. And then it's divided back out according to that. So we don't know when we'll get that money. So along in that same timeframe, as you know, no new monies were put into education at the state level. So we actually projected a deficit due to that with no increase. So the current $300,000 that we are allocated right now is being used to backfill the deficit. We're just making a rough estimate for SRR2, that it'll be somewhere around $600,000. That was supposed to be our original allocation before joint finance changed it. It could be more, it could be less, we're not sure. But I would say minus the $150,000 that we have allocated for the greenhouse, almost all of that will go to fill the deficit for this year. We did run a little bit higher deficit on purpose. And I shouldn't really call it a deficit because we actually, knowing that we were going to get some of that SRR2 money, we did put some money into staffing. So as Erin stated, we did hire an extra kindergarten teacher and an extra second-grade teacher to offset the class size. Otherwise, we would have had class sizes in the lower grades of up over 25, 26. And especially in the middle of a pandemic, it's still a lot of kids to put in a classroom. I know we do have other class sizes of that nature right now. The other thing we also wanted to address was some reading instruction at the middle school level. At the elementary, we do have reading specialists that provide intervention. We didn't have that at the middle school level. So we did decide to use some of that SRR money for reading support, which was an allowed use for that SRR2 money. So it is actually going to support a literacy coach that's at the middle school level that is also helping to provide interventions. And we also moved one of our elementary reading teachers up there to support specifically fifth grade because they were learning, they were all learning the Lucy Cockens reading curriculum. So as they were learning that this summer, Jenny Nichols is up there supporting that with some in-classroom instruction and co-teaching. So that is right in line with our strategic plan. And we are confident we'll see some increased test scores do that, or at least having kids that are getting support where maybe last year or the year before, they weren't. So that moves, so basically, SRR2 is spent unless we get a lot larger allocation than what we're expecting. So once SRR3 is released, and we're not quite sure when that will be, right now, the initial allocation was about $713,000. We're expecting it to be a little bit more than that. However, like I said, there's some strings that come attached with SRR3s. So unlike SRR2, where we had a lot of flexibility of how we could spend that, SRR3, you do not. So SRR3 is requiring a 20% set aside of that money. And it has to be specifically used towards research-based instruction. So we are working through our strategic plan on that. We have some English learner needs that we will be looking into addressing, some of the social-emotional learner needs, and then with special education as well. But as I said, we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves because we don't know what all of the requirements are quite yet, and we don't have the money yet either. So and they do, DPI is stating, obviously, they want you to spend up SRR2 before you start spending SRR3. So once we have more information about that, we will have a plan in place to work through all the requirements of SRR3. Okay. So, any questions on SRR2 or SRR3 or the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction? Well, between Tasha and I, we will keep you updated on SRR2 and SRR3, probably each month as new information comes out, just so you're well aware of where we're at with those monies. Along with that, I talked about our nursing hours. Last year, because of all the hours Tony worked, we did extend an additional contract with Fort Healthcare to make up for those hours. Currently, Tony has contracted 30 hours a week. We've got three fairly large buildings, so we've got a part-time nurse for 1,600 students, which is still enough when you're not in a COVID-type year. Tony is already well over those hours, you know, dealing with all different hosts and things. We've also got some newer students that moved in that have some pretty high medical needs that she's also addressing as well. So I've been just in some conversations with Fort Healthcare to just see what are the possibilities of temporarily adding some part-time help for Tony. And I said I would be coming and talking to the board about this. They're not, they're not very, they're not super confident that we'd be able to find a part-time nurse. As you know, I know all the hospitals, everybody's scrambling for any type of nursing help. So we can put it out there and post that and see if we get any additional help. And that can look like a couple of different ways. It can be, you know, three, four hours a day. It could just be, you know, two days a week, something like that. Last year, we did, we did try to hire an additional, some additional help for Tony, and we weren't able to find it. And then we did hire some healthroom assistants. It's just not the same because they don't have the nursing background. So even though it took a little bit of work off of Tony, it was more clerical work. Whereas she really needs the support in administering specific health and, you know, assistance to our students as well. So I said, I would like to pursue that. So going back to some of the SRR monies that would be an allowable expense, I know we're kind of getting tight with the SRR monies. But as I said, it's a big workload right now on Tony.
So we would expect, then, once you find- So, we would expect then, once, once you find the, the right opportunity, that you'll be coming back to the board with a recommendation as far as additional nursing services?
Yes. If, if you are all right with that, we will try to pursue some part-time help. It would be just for this school year right now. Hopefully, we're returning somewhat, you know, to normal at some point, or even, you know, even if it's not needed all school year, if, if, you know, things change and it looks like by February, March, things are, you know, easing up to, we can change that contract. Fort Healthcare's been wonderful to work with. They're, they're very flexible and very supportive, and they're willing to work with us with our needs, so.
Dr. Olson, would that kind of position be? Could the funding for the S R funding apply to the?
Yes. So, and then just as a reminder, we do contract with Fort Healthcare, so we don't, we don't hire that person directly. So, we would use some of the S R money to offset that. That's what we did last year with the health room assistant. I believe we were using that to, to help with the COVID-related issues. And lastly, I know I was hesitant to pursue the COVID testing. When DHS first presented that, I did think of Toni because I was perceiving that this program would mean we would have to test students, which I was not in favor of, and Toni was not in favor of for a couple of different reasons. Once I didn't, I didn't want to put Toni in that position. Number two, she didn't have the time. We were trying to not get in the COVID testing business if we could help it. We had a couple of parents ask about it, and I said, "No, we're not going to pursue it." And then, working through the month of August and, and seeing how some families really struggled to find a testing site. And then, you know, already, you know, at the beginning of the year, you know, we're, we're asking parents like, you know, "Maybe just get a COVID test and rule out, you know, the possibility that your child has COVID." And that's easier said than done. It's not like we can just go down to Walgreens and quick get a test, and in 24 hours, you have the results. I think it's also hard if, if you're sick or if you have a child that's sick, and now we're expecting you to drive to Fort Atkinson or expecting you to drive it to the Alliance Center or, or anywhere else. So, I did have a conversation with Walgreens in town, who said their equipment is currently broken. They're really having a struggle getting it fixed, so that's why they're not offering anything right now. I told them to keep in contact with me if that would change. And so, then I decided to look into the DHS testing a little more closely and learned that you really can be partnered with an off-site vendor. They will do all the work. You're basically just hosting the site, and it is open to parents as well. So, it's not just for students. They still need consent and everything else, just like you would if you went to an off-site testing site. So, I haven't had the meeting with them yet because I wanted approval to move forward of this. If, if you, you know, would like that, otherwise, you know, if not, I, I don't have to move forward with it. But you have a couple of different options as a district. You can choose the days of the testing. You can choose the times of the testing. So, you could choose to offer testing during the school day. You could offer it two days a week, three days a week. You could offer it after-school hours, which is what I would recommend. I don't want to get in the middle of testing kids during the school day or be, or be perceived that we're testing any kids. And, and so, really, you're just allowing a space for them to just set up a table. I've seen other districts where it's kind of like the Alliance Center. You drive up in the Circle Drive. They walk out. They give you the testing materials. They collect them back, and they send it in. So, they do all the work at no cost. And I think if, if nothing else, if you did suspect that maybe you or your child had COVID, you're not jumping through so many hurdles to try to find a place to go and, and get a test. It's, it, it is, I think, a little bit of peace of mind to rule that out, especially because we've already started to see, you know, kids with cough or congestion, and it's allergy season, and, you know, it, it's like, "Well, maybe let's, maybe just have a test." And then at least you know for sure that, you know, they're not positive with COVID. So, we just, I guess the goal of this is just try to, to take some hurdles out of this. So, and like I said, I won't really have more information until we meet with them, you know, after getting your permission. But right now, we're talking with Toni. We are like aiming for outside of school hours. Hopefully, if we can get them three days a week, we'd love to do like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday to just kind of offset things. But I know it, it's going to depend on the company as well. It's actually a company out, out of Milwaukee that will be our, our vendor if, if we pursue this.
And that'll be on the action agenda later in the meeting?
Yes. And I, yep, I have that. I was just asking for your approval with this. But as I said, shouldn't be any extra work on the district. It's just a convenience for families. And I have to double-check. I'm not sure if it's just open to like families, like parents and children, or if it's open to the whole community. I, I wasn't quite sure yet too. So, I have to ask a couple more questions about the logistics of that.
Any other questions for Dr. Olson?
What?
Just wondering if there are other questions for you?
Yeah. So, I think we've covered everything. And any other questions?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item is community input. I understand that we have a number of people who have requested an opportunity to speak.
Yeah. I know Megan's phone sometimes works with the timer and sometimes it doesn't. So, she is going to put the timer on the big screen. It just kind of helps everybody, especially if you're a speaker. You don't have to sit and wonder if you've got a minute left or 30 seconds. You can kind of judge how fast you might want to talk. So, she'll shove the timer up there, and I believe you have the list.
Well, according to the board rule, we have a total time allotment of 15 minutes, asking that each person limit their comments to three minutes. This evening, we have eight people who are interested in speaking. If there are no objections, I would waive that, ask to set aside that rule for this evening so each person would get the full three minutes. And so, we'll call on people in the order in which they registered. And I would ask when, when the time is up, if you could just finish your thought in respect for the next speaker who would be coming forward. So, and then I would ask if you, as you come forward, if you would identify yourself and provide your address, please. So, the first person is Sheena Wiedenfeld?
Hi there. As you said, I'm Sheena Wiedenfeld. My address is N 6414 Wolleen Road in Lake Mills here. So, I wanted to discuss some of the things about accommodations and what I've experienced so far with my child being back to school and what I experienced with her being back to school and not in-person last year, wearing masks. So, as regards to data on masks versus unmask, there, there's really not a ton of significant evidence to say that the schools fare differently. There's, across the globe, many countries deciding not to mandate mask on young children due to the data they do know, which is the importance of faces in social cognitive and psychological development. My child alone tests dangerously, or, our child, sorry, dangerously low oxygen levels when wearing paper cloth masks. So, when I think about risk, that's what I'm considering. We know in regards to COVID, children have very low risk. In fact, there's risks that still rank above COVID, such as car accidents and drowning. And how many of you drove your kid to the beach this summer? So, recommendations that you guys are saying we need to do this for, for CDC purposes. There are thousands of personal health recommendations that many adults in this room ignore and now are cherry-picking which ones matter to them in regards to my child's health, the healthiest population we have. Principals are literally standing outside school and denying healthy children access to public education over one CDC recommendation. I'm sorry, would you like it if parents denied teachers the right to go to work over improper BMI or weight or exercise and food recommendations they're not following? In regards to social distancing, quarantine, those recommendations are being ignored. So, my conclusion is these masks aren't really about CDC recommendations or health, but about money or keeping the unions off your back. I personally found my child suffered lightheadedness, headaches, and nausea most days after school last year, and I'm not repeating that this year. I found a reasonable accommodation from, which is a shield, and I'm harassed nearly every day that this doesn't meet policy, a policy that has not been produced for me. Her accommodation of a shield is both effective for her health and IEP education needs. Not to mention, I would argue that it is more effective because it prevents face touching, and water droplets actually can't penetrate plastic like they can your cloth or paper mask. You have parents here that have submitted constitutional exemptions that the principal and district, they have no right or qualifications deny, but yet are. And now the parents are lawyering up and wasting time and money that could go to our kids' education. These are personal health decisions that you are interfering with. If there were public health solutions, they would have worked. Masks and vaccines have not changed the trajectory of this virus. If you're not going to make masks optional, I ask that you vote the motion that parents assess their child's needs as they have always done and are able to provide reasonable accommodations such as shields or have constitutional protected exemptions without the resistance of your school district.
The next person is Andy Wiedenfeld?
All right. So, just going to make a little noise here. All right. So, the reason I'm here tonight, I have this particular monitor, right? Two weeks ago, I spent $940 on this thing. I use them in my career quite frequently, right? Kid tests oxygen level in this space as if another, three other contaminants as well, right? Mostly what it's going to do in OSHA's eyes is it's going to test oxygen level in here. It doesn't matter if it's a small little three-inch square under my child's mask or a giant space here. This means it's not discriminating. It holds an exact reading. So, I'm going to say it is, it's not lying, right? So, after the meeting, I would say, anyone here, if you want to test it, look at it, try to debunk it, I say, "Go for it," okay? I want you to do it, all right? OSHA has a 19.5%. That's the level oxygen that can be in the air that any person working can enter. Not legal to let in under that, right? This monitor is going to show you that this child's mask, when she puts it on, is going to be less than that, right? So, you need to hear recommendations. So, right now, it's 20.9. You're going to find that everywhere in Southern Wisconsin. You go on High Mountain, yeah, you're going to find lower oxygen content, right? Or if you trap the air that's coming out of my child's mouth, which has got a lot of carbon dioxide in it, then you're breathing that carbon dioxide back in. So, I'm at 17.1 right now. Remember, 19.5 is what OSHA will allow us, right? Soon as I pull it on her mask, it's going to go right back up. As soon as I blow on it, it's going to go back down, okay? This doesn't lie. There's no studies out there that are going to tell you your mask works great. But this is real proof, okay? All you got to do is look at real proof. I had this, and I went over it with a school nurse, second-year school, right? I gave her all my study. I documented it, okay? We sent it to Tanya. I'm going to take all those documentation, and I'm going to take it into Amber at the leader, and I'm going to put it out there so everyone can see that, okay? But this is, this is real proof. I want to say, everyone here, God bless y'all, okay? You're all great people, okay? We all have different ideas in life. But what we really need to do is care about each other and care about what other people want. Not everyone wants what you want. And we just all have good feelings, okay? Please don't clap for me. I'm a hero, okay? If you want to clap for anyone, those two gentlemen in the back room save our butts every day. Clap for them, yep. And our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Clap for that person.
Okay, the next person, Tabitha Lawler?
Tabitha Lawler, very close. 935 Reed Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. The Pledge of Allegiance, we stated at the beginning of this meeting, is considered to be a platform where our children are given the opportunity to think about roles as citizens in the country. It expresses that we are one, unable to be divided or separated, that we have the right to liberty, to be free within society from control or oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's ways of life, behavior, political views, as long as it doesn't deprive another from their freedom. And we have the right to justice, to a morally right-based code of ethics, to a morally right administration of law in our case school policies, taking into account inborn rights of all human beings. My family went with the flow last year, abiding by the school's request to send our child in a mask. What we didn't know was the impact it was going to have on his body. We started noticing increased headaches and fatigue. I watched my child climb into my car every day at pickup with rosy red cheeks and often complaints of fatigue and headache. Headaches, I learned, would resolve with time out of the mask. We went through summers, the summer symptom-free and mask-free. When school started this year with the mandate, I decided to test my son's blood oxygen saturation levels before and after school. On all days before school, my son had a 99% blood oxygen saturation level. On day, on test day one, he wore a mask that tightly covered his nose and mouth until approximately 1:00 PM. Then he switched to the shield due to not feeling well. After school this day, his levels were 96%. Hypoxia occurs at 94%. Symptoms of this are skin color changes to bright red or blue, fatigue, and headaches. On the remaining test day, he wore only the shield, and after school, his saturation levels were 98%. I implore parents to buy a monitor and test this for yourselves. Make sure your children are not suffering from negative effects of lack of oxygen. Oxygen is required for life, and our children deserve proper saturation levels to develop and grow, and this is a critical time to stand up for them. The school has not appropriately handled the information given to them. They have been made aware of negative impacts, but prefer to power struggle with parents over necessary steps we have to take to protect our children. We have to be the frontline of information, as there are no studies that have been done to prove masks are safe at such prolonged periods of time. The CDC is using our children as guinea pigs and openly admit that the side effects of mask-wearing is unknown, especially when it comes to transmission rates amongst our children's population. In fact, a Georgia study of 99,000 students shows the transmission difference between the maskless and the masked as not significant. Let's agree the safety of our children and their families is most important, and unite together and listen to each other's independent tests and information. To the elected board, allow parents a choice. It is unconstitutional if you refuse. Do not resist them over their right to religious belief or medical needs. Allow shields without resistance, and acknowledge the danger for some and respect individual right to public education and the right to breathe. Thank you.
Sandy Whistler?
Thank you. We know that students learn best when they are in-person at school and safely returning to in-person instruction. This fall has been a priority, which it should be. There is clear uniformity from medical professionals, including the American Pediatrics Association and public health organizations, that in order to return to school safely, we need to get vaccinated when eligible, wear a mask indoors, maintain a safe distance, and wash our hands regularly. We were successful last year in safely providing in-person instruction throughout our district. We came together as a community of public health experts, public education advocates, and public schools to keep our schools and our businesses open. How will we be successful this year? How will we come together as a community? First, I want to thank you for requiring masks in 4K through grade 12 at the beginning of this school year. You've provided an essential first step to safety, safely providing in-person instruction. As we move forward, we know that in many cases, we're not able to provide the recommended three feet of physical distance between students to reduce the transmission risk, and that our students under age 12 are not eligible for the vaccine. So, it's especially important to layer multiple mitigation strategies, including screening, testing, ventilation, contact tracing with quarantine and isolation, and cleaning and disinfection. Tonight, you've already talked about the possibility of additional nursing services. that may arise in conversation as we go through the next few months, not knowing the impact of the variants that we are dealing with. Those will allow us to keep our staff and our students safe and our schools open for in-person learning. And I personally want to thank all of you and I want to thank all of the staff that works diligently, hour by hour and day by day, to make our school a safe and welcoming place for our students. Thank you.
Next time, I won't sit in the middle of the row. So I'm Kate. I'm a district resident and parent. Thank you for hearing public comment tonight. Thank you for your continued work to keep our school district strong and healthy. The vast majority of our community appreciates everything that you do. Congratulations also on a safe and smooth start to the school year. I can only speak from experience with elementary level, but we have been very impressed with everyone we have interacted with. The reason I am commenting tonight is to encourage the district administrator and the board to continue requiring face coverings in all three schools. There was a positive case in one of my children's class this week. Because everyone was wearing masks, my concern for transmission was very subdued. We know that barrier masks prevent the spread of disease. The spread of COVID in our community and the vaccination rates are comparable to those discussed at the August 30th meeting. Face coverings are as necessary now as they were then, and I am confident that the board will continue to do what is right for all the students in our district. In addition to preventing disease spread in our schools, masking keeps the kids on a level playing field and prevents segregation in the classroom between masked and unmasked. The night before school started, when I told my third grader that everyone would be required to wear masks at school, she was overjoyed and relieved. Her strong reaction took me a little bit by surprise. Who wants to wear a mask, really? But she explained that she was excited because it would be safe to play with everyone now and that would be awesome. My husband and I do not discuss the vitriol of the masking debate with our children. They do not read or watch the TV news. We believe this is a discussion meant to be done with the adults in the room and to let the kids be free to be kids. Our children simply know that we wear masks to protect others and that's the right thing to do. My daughter was happy to be able to be a kid, not having to worry about an unmasked classmate potentially giving her COVID because they didn't ask. Her time and energy can be spent learning multiplication and cursive, playing tag on the playground, and giggling with her girlfriends, not worrying about a pandemic or who isn't wearing a mask in class. My kid gets to be a kid because the adults in the room did their job. And I thank you for that. But do you have one thing, within my 43 seconds, I have to quickly address the oxygen saturation misinformation because it's very frustrating to me as a medical professional. So the machine...
Can I address my independent data or his...
The machine thing that you were using does not measure the oxygen saturation of blood. And you mentioned yourself that you...
No, it's not the machine. Like I said, you cannot comment on that.
So you talked about how you measured the saturation of blood oxygen in your daughter, and 96% is an excellent level, and I'm happy for her.
98%, 99% is an excellent level, which is what he had before he put a mask on.
If you'd both like to submit your information, we will take that in accordance.
All right. All right, we're done. Janelle Pauli?
Hello, I am Janelle Pauli and I live at 1041 High Street. And I'm here because the COVID restrictions from the radical left make no sense. Last year, this board came to the consensus that the virus spreads slowest in the younger kids, but now it's flip-flopped. But the science is settled. Or is it? Six-year-olds can't go outdoors to play in Madison schools without a mask, but a Badger football game is packed and not a single mask in sight. A superintendent doesn't have to follow this board's rules. She can make up her own rules. There were no exceptions to the motion that was made requiring masks in schools. No exceptions for sports, no exceptions to anything, but yet she can make up her own rules. But yet our kids should follow the rules. According to this board, specifically Dawn's motion, COVID's dangerous in the schools, but not in the district office. And now you wanna bring people who are suspected to be positive and need a COVID test into a school? How does that make sense? I'm also here because we have constitutional rights, and you guys took oaths to uphold them. And I've requested a copy of those signed oaths. So you guys can criticize me. We can put up with the outburst at the last meeting, or you can take ownership of it because the lack of communication from this board is your own fault. And Justice William Brennan famously wrote for the U.S. Supreme Court in a libel law decision, New York Times Company versus Sullivan in 1964, and I quote, "Thus, we consider this case against the background of a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." I don't have to be nice to you. You don't have to like what I said, but you do have to hear me speak. And again, you're creating your own problems. Ken's rattled off numbers and used that as justification for mask mandates, yet we've seen no justification for it. Following the CDC, I've looked at the CDC website. There's China studies, there's studies of two hairstylists, and those are used to advocate for masks, but a study of 6,000 people is discounted because there's not enough people involved. It makes no sense. You guys had a Q and A with an epidemiologist.
Okay, thank you.
You guys had a Q and A with an epidemiologist. Were there any questions that came from the people who pay the bills?
Ms. Pauli, thank you.
Hi, Kim Kene Sting Lund. I live at 409 Fremont Street. And the first thing I want to say is thank you for following the guidance of the Jefferson County Health Department and for pediatricians across the country and other healthcare providers and mandating the mask-wearing in the school district. My daughter is at high enough risk for the virus that she can't come to school. The Delta variant of COVID that we're seeing right now is vaporized. And so that's where the mask is important. It keeps that virus from going out and hanging in the air. And she is at high risk if she comes in contact with that because she's not able to wear a mask for specific reasons related to, I guess, her characteristics. But she is, thank you, thank you, for our fabulous teachers and the principals of the elementary school and special education staff. She is able on Fridays to go physically to school for the first time in 18 months for two hours because they clear a hallway and let it kind of breathe so that vaporized virus is out of the air. They have her come in the door, come right around into a classroom that has been empty because the 4K students aren't there, and she is able to meet one-on-one for the first time in 18 months with her teachers and her support staff and go to school. And she came home last Friday afternoon singing, "I went to school and did school stuff. I went to school and did school stuff." And we probably heard every 15 minutes since then is it time to go back to school. And so I appreciate the support of the community of other parents and everybody else that allows her to be able to do that. The second thing that I want to say is, when we worked on the strategic plan for our district, we talked a lot about wanting our students who are different from each other in background, student and staff who are different from each other, to be able to get along better, right? To learn, to understand each other, and for us all to feel like we belong regardless of who we are. We wrote that into one of the pillars. We talked about fostering meaningful dialogue. I want to ask us in Lake Mills, especially parents of students, to work towards that meaningful dialogue, to be kind to each other, to be respectful of each other, and to listen to each other. It does not mean we have to agree with each other. I worked daily with 18 and 19-year-olds that are more respectful and have better discussions and learn from each other, more than we often seem to in this room on Monday nights at these meetings. Help us set an example for our students and help us set examples for other communities that we can do this. We don't need to agree. I'm not asking that, but we can listen to each other and not shout out and call names. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've come up here and I can feel my legs. Oh, sorry. Okay. Melanie Fritz. I live in Cambridge. Actually, you have my address. But my kids have been in virtual learning for two years to avoid the COVID psychology. We hesitantly came back because we had faith and continue to in our superintendent. Last year, one of our children searched suicide on his school-issued computer. He is not the same kid without the social interaction in-person learning afforded him. This year, he was allowed to forego a mask even after the sneaky Zoom meeting last Tuesday for nearly two weeks as I tried every angle to allow him to breathe freely in schools. Trust me, I tried everything. And everyone that knows my situation knows my hands are really, really tied right now. Wearing one sincerely breaks his spirit, gives him headaches, and has made him nauseous in the past. All parents struggling to find doctors that will see your children for exemptions, please do email me or reach out. There are doctors that are willing and able to do this for you. After two weeks of breathing freely, I was forced to put a face covering on one of our boys in order to keep him connected with friends this past week. This was an extremely difficult decision for us. Discussing with him that he would be forced to wear one after all that he continues to share about how it makes him feel is heartbreaking. I want to thank the district staff that helped us in every way they possibly could. I'd lastly like to argue that if this was truly about health or liability, no one would be maskless on your property. As it stands, one can remove their mask at 3:00 p.m. and walk straight into a gym full of volleyball participants and witnesses and sit on the other, sit on one another's laps if they wanted to. There's no mask required for school clubs before or after, and no social distancing. My understanding is that when we can, excuse me, my understanding is that we continue to cater to a small minority of students. We are not, why are we not sheltering the ill? Am I missing something? It's possible that I am. Is it not allowed to do so? Is there a legal piece that we're unaware of? The amount of healthy children with solid immune systems far outnumber the immunocompromised in the school. One of my sons has asthma, anaphylactic allergies, and a compromised immune system as well, and I would never ask all of you to mask your kids to protect him. How is it that healthy children are being forced to suffer? There is a better way. You've just not yet been willing to step up, be bold, and navigate this uncharted territory with us bravely. We can do this together. We all want what's best for our kids, but we are the parents. Please let our children be children. Let them breathe. Leave their health and wellness to us, their parents. I cannot make you take vitamin D nor vitamin C, but we know that works. Thank you sincerely for your time. I appreciate all the honesty and transparency everyone in this district has offered this past week. I did all that I could this week to dig deep, to dig as deep as possible regarding exemptions for the parents who requested them. I'm greatly appreciative of the empathy and understanding provided to the children that wish to breathe freely. Thank you to everyone, every teacher that allowed our children to breathe this week, even though they weren't supposed to be allowed to. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your willingness to come this evening and share your thoughts. Your comments are will be taken under consideration as we move forward. So I thank you very much for that. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. That includes meeting minutes from August 9, August 17, August 30, and August 31. The finance committee proceedings of August 9. Facility committee proceedings of September 8. Treasurers report vouchers and invoices, and personnel report. Entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Moved and seconded. That information has been provided earlier to us, and if there are no questions, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Dawn Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving into the action items.
The first item is the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Service Plan as presented. Dr. Olson discussed that during her report. So that we could have any further discussion, I would ask for a motion on the, to approve that plan.
I'll move the board approve the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? I guess that I have both a question and a comment, and that is, how are we going to deal with athletics under that plan?
Right. I mean, when we did, when you took the board vote on that Tuesday before school started, I mean, we had our athletic plan in place. We also had our rec department plan in place. So the motion did not specify, I think the intent of the motion was that it was actually during the school day. The school board definitely can bring this back in October. If you want to require masks after school, just remember that's gonna require all spectators for volleyball, which are a lot of parents. It also means that Club 55, all of the adult volleyball inside that would be required to mask with the absence of a specific designation of where the masking would cut off. I did start with the school day just because I figured that was the intent. If that was the intent that masking would be required on school premises 24/7, then I think a new motion would need to be made. And then I do, I would request time to go back because I do need to work with the rec department and I do need to work with Steve Concinde on what specifically does that mean? It also means notifying the other school districts in the conference as well. So there's, I guess, on my behalf, there was a lot more work that went into writing the requirement for all of that, and they were already in motion at that time. If that was not the intent, I think we're already in the operational portion of that. I definitely can bring back some information to the October board meeting as far as what we're seeing with the schools in Jefferson County that are not masking in comparison with ours. We don't have enough data right now. I did talk with Sumrose about that. With only two weeks into the school year, there wasn't quite specific data yet, but we can, we'll definitely, I'm kind of ahead of myself on the agenda, but we can bring that back around to the October board meeting and look at that data again.
And I think the comment that I had, I wanted to note that this particular plan follows the commitment that you made earlier, which is to continually monitor what is going on and that this plan would be adjusted as conditions were to change. on, and that this plan would be adjusted as conditions were to change, if they change, that we will be flexible as we move forward. So I think that that, I think that that needs to be understood as well, that this represents what we understand today, and that should conditions change, we would have to also make some changes.
Right, and I think, I mean, I guess, I'm thinking I would prefer that we write something in this plan that specifically states that, since the board voted to require masks. I'm not sure if I quite have the authority right now that if, say, the numbers drop down to zero, to say that, oh, now I'm not going to require masks anymore. So I can bring back some language in October, along with the data that, and possibly some metrics. We just didn't quite have that at this time to look at, when would we loosen up the mask requirement, and then possibly make masks optional, so.
Could we get some guidance from-
I did talk with Sam Rose today about that, and so the Health Department is debating that fact right now, as far as their guidance right now is coming out, that they are advocating for K-12 masking. If the numbers continue to stabilize or even decline a bit, they were talking about loosening up that restriction potentially, so I think bringing all of that back here in a month would be worthwhile.
And also looking at vaccination rates in Lake Mills and Jefferson County?
Yeah, he didn't mention that as a big factor, just because half of our kids can't get vaccinated, and that he didn't think that the vaccine for the 12 and under would be rolling out very soon, so.
It could help things, though, if more people got vaccinated.
So, so yes, I will bring, if for some reason things drastically change in two weeks, you know, we could always look at a special board meeting possibly, but we are tracking the transmission rates in all of the Jefferson County schools very closely to see, is it making a difference, or is it not making a difference? Be real honest with you.
So to clarify, following up on your discussion, Bob and Dr. Olson, is, given the flexibility that we want in the plan to adjust to conditions for Dr. Olson, that that would be written into the plan? Is that the idea, or?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
In other words, you were discussing needing the flexibility within the plan to make adjustments.
Right, and it's integrated in the draft document.
Yeah, and so we don't have to take any further action on that later on?
No, no, I was just making the point.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did. I think that was a really important one.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll address athletics. I think athletics, after-school club, things like that, those are your personal choices. Rec programs, the kids have to come to school, that's their job, just like we go to a job. So I think when it comes to that, I think that's where we're hearing, give options, give choices. If you don't feel like it's a place that is where you're feeling comfortable, if that is, you know, already set up and planned and put into place, then, you know, the families can weigh those risks on their own. But our job as a board is to really look at this for our schools, and what our kids are doing for their job during the day. And so then, how does that affect them, and what does that mean for keeping all of those kids safe? And so I think it's, I think there is a difference. I think you are wanting to be a one-and-done, but you're also telling us that there should be some options. And unfortunately, this is kind of uncharted crazy waters, and so we're doing the best that we can with what we have been presented with, and what we feel is best for the kids, and all of the kids. I don't wake up in the morning feeling like I've won any situation. I wake up knowing and hearing your stories, and how that's affecting your children, and so I understand that you are feeling the way you are feeling. But when I have to take into consideration all of the children, there's a piece there that makes me feel that I have to make a decision, but also know that there is a heavy heart, knowing how that hurts and affects others. So I want you to know that this isn't an easy job for us. We don't take it lightly, and I think that I would appreciate, like we said, using kindness, empathy towards one another, working with each other, because we have to bridge the divide. We have to work together. I just, I just think it's really important. Our kids need us to be role models right now, and I don't know that they're seeing that. And I want them to have smiling faces and love coming to school. And so by working together and getting through this hump, this too shall pass, and we will make it stronger in the end by working together. So I understand that maybe Dr. Olson left off that athletic piece, because plans are already built, and I can choose whether or not we participate in a rec program. You know, my kid doesn't have to play volleyball, my kid doesn't have to do some of those after-school activities, if we feel that that is too much of a risk for our family. But my kid needs to go to school.
Okay, any other comments? I think that perhaps we could get some more information at the October meeting, as you suggest, and see if there's any modifications that need to be, that need to be made, so.
Okay, I will do that while-
Otherwise, I would call the question and ask for a roll call vote.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Robert DiPirio?
Aye, motion carries. The next is the approval to pursue the testing. I think that it's, you were pretty clear in your report. I think two things, is that this is to pursue and understand and get more information-
Correct.
This is something that, if approved, we support, and the testing is voluntary, obviously.
And we would not be bringing possible positive people inside the school grounds. It would most likely look like the drive-up that if you've gotten COVID testing, it's all a drive-up. The person comes out and they either swab your nose for you, or they hand you the Q-tip. So no, we do not want to bring possible sick people into the school environment, so they would just be, you know, arriving to a parking lot, and the vendor would hand, either hand them the tools or do that themselves. I think I see a lot of them now handing you the swab, and the person does it themselves. So, so yes, I just wanted to clarify that. Definitely don't want to bring disease into the school.
So I'd entertain a motion for, a motion to approve the, moving forward.
I move the board approve COVID-19 testing support.
Second.
Moved and seconded. As others have noted, testing is certainly a component to the, to the safe, safety of our students and staff, so I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPirio?
Aye, motion carries. The next item is the approval of gifts, and again, we certainly are very thankful for the community's support. So I'd entertain a motion to accept the gifts.
I move the board accept the following gifts, and thank their generous donors for their continued support of our students and programs of the Lake Mills area school district. The first gift is an $800 Amazon gift card to be used on school supplies from St. Vincent de Paul. A $1,000 donation to the High School Junior Optimists Club from the Lake Mills Optimists, and 500 children's masks valued at $1,150 from the Sunrise Reach nonprofit members, Melissa Rugletz-Walker, Gracelyn Smith, Vanessa Vargas, Lane Smith, and Rachel Davies.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Robert DiPirio?
Aye, motion carries. Future agenda items.
We have some annual things that come up every year in October, the Start College Now requests and early graduation requests, believe it or not, already start coming in. And we will introduce you to our new student board member. I didn't have as much privilege of being part of that last year, just because we were a virtual part of the year, and I didn't see Bella until the end of the year, so we'll be starting that. I will bring back some language regarding the plan as far as masking, and so on and so forth. And then, anything else?
We'll probably need to have a separate meeting to approve the budget later in October, when the necessary information has been confirmed, correct?
Yep, we'll have a special meeting on Monday, October 25, just for two agenda items, and that is the annual approval of the tax levy, which we can't do until the fourth Monday of the month, just because we need the final numbers from the state, which don't come in really only a few days before that. And then we'll be also asking for approval for the refinancing of the referendum debt, which is saving the district quite a bit of money, so just, those will be the only two items on that, that special board meeting. And that meeting starts earlier at 6:00.
Great. Okay, the next item, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
You should really read the whole statute, so, yep, sorry, or the whole motion, I should say.
You ready for it? Ready for it?
I move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Pren I, District Administrator Evaluation.
The second, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Robert DiPirio?
Aye.